Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Monday, September 29th Board of Trustees meeting. If you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll try and speak up. These microphones, these are new, and it's a digital connection, so it's recording, but it doesn't always pick up the speaker. So if we fade in and out, just so you know, listen a little closer, but we'll try and remember to get closer so you can hear us. Okay. Item number one, public comment. If you're here to speak about anything regarding township business or on the agenda tonight, now's your time. You can come up to the microphone, my right, your left, and we ask everybody to stay within a three-minute time limit, please. Yes, sir. And if you'd introduce yourself and your address, that'd be wonderful.
How you doing, everybody? First time I met you, Mike, and appreciate hard work you do and the staff. My name is Jack Alexander, and I live 1415 West Square Lake Road. My purpose tonight here, the traffic, it's okay, 35 miles an hour. When the cars are flying from Telegraph coming south on Square Lake Road, they're racing after they pass Telegraph, two cars are racing and they cut each other. That's not the only problem. They're flying. They are driving so fast, nobody can do anything about it, even your department can do nothing about it. They said, oh, it's Oakland County's job. Now, I'm paying taxpayer. I've been there 33 years. I enjoy my township. I worked for the township so many years, then I quit. I become, I work for West Bloomfield right now. What they took me there because they treated me right after the COVID. Christine, they said, oh, we don't need you anymore, Captain Jack. That's my nickname. So anyway, my question is, do you have power to control that traffic?
We're not here to answer questions. We're just here to listen to your statement, but maybe we'll respond after the public comment.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Captain Jack. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Hello. Chris Gagnon, 6529 Cathedral Drive. I know I come up here more often than I should, but I promised to make this quick. Effective 10/1, I will have the honor to serve as the President of the Birmingham Farms Homeowners Association. I want to make it a point tonight to request that the Board of Trustees tune into the ZBA meeting tomorrow, as I expect there to be very constructive dialogue, in particular from those neighbors who are opposed to the project. While the new HOA does not intend to make, take an official position on the development, we believe that the neighbors will have plenty to share. We hope to see you all there. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chris. Congratulations.
Maybe.
If there's no more public comment, one more?
I tried to prepare something, so I appreciate it. Good evening, Bloomfield Township Trustees, Supervisor McCready, and fellow residents. My name is Michael McDonald. I live at 2753 Aldgate Drive, and the following summary to follow. I would like to first off thank the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I want to recognize Chief Gallagher and the entire Bloomfield Township Police Department, especially the Traffic Enforcement Division. I think it's timely that I come after this gentleman. Secondly, my wife had suggested that I stay away from dad jokes and seemingly witty puns, but of course I told her I'd try. So to avoid any confusion with that other Michael McDonald, you can call me Mike. If I could set the stage, my public speaking's a bit rusty, so I'll do my best to paint a clear picture. As a resident of Bloomfield Township for over 15 years, it was close to 15 years ago when I first and last had the opportunity to plead my case to the board. At the time, it was for the zoning board of appeals requesting an approval to install a fence, as our street address was South Boulevard, and we had concerns that once our children were old enough and quick enough, a fence was the only way to protect them from the traffic. So after several years and two young children, the wooden privacy fence and powder-coated chain leak fence still look good, by the way, we found ourselves in search of our next home. This time, we wanted to be in a neighborhood that was full of children and a reasonable distance from 45 mile an hour traffic. So in 2019, we found the perfect place within a lovely neighborhood of Hickory Grove Hills, smooth blacktop, paved roads, perfect for rollerblading and family bike rides, seemed almost too good to be true. Then 2020 happened and the world shut down. Like many others, I found myself working from home, and I had the joys of looking out my front window to see these lovely roads on a daily basis. With that came the unfortunate realization that we were on the Aldgate Speedway. We live middle of Aldgate, so you can get from Hickory Grove to Woodward without a single stop sign, very smooth roads, and the traffic is a nightmare. We daily witness speeders in excess of 30 miles an hour, 40 miles an hour. We have data to back this. Like in my professional life, I try to practice what I preach, so it's not just enough to call attention to the opportunities, but also to come prepared with solutions. And we've done our homework. We've met with the RCOC, the Road Commission of Oakland County. We've met with the previous administration, and we've actually gone out and independently received quotes for radar signs and speed humps, anything that we can do to protect our residents. You may be looking to understand my ask, and it's simple. I'm asking for your support, your partnership, your leadership. Navigating the complex and bureaucratic process with RCOC, leading to key changes to the roads in Hickory Grove Hills and Colbert Hills, it's not just an ask, but it's imperative to come up with attempts to mitigate the abundance of cut-through commuter traffic, hazardous speeders, and distracted drivers. Our need, and hopefully you agree, is to focus not on pointing fingers and blaming others, but ultimately to find a solution to the safety of our residents.
It's been three minutes, Mr. McDonald.
All right. Thank you for the time. I look forward to coming back again next month and with more residents and working with the township to come up with a solution.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comment? Public comment, please come up. If not, we'll close public comment. Yeah, we will, Captain Jack and Michael, we'll, let's find a time to meet and get together and see what we can do to help the situation. We've been doing some extra road patrols with a special patrol to tackle neighborhoods where we're getting cut through traffic, and we're seeing a lot of it from the, because of the 696 shutdown. They're coming through multiple neighborhoods, not just ours, but our neighboring communities down mile roads, and it's really causing a problem, not just Hickory Grove, like Lone Pine, 16 mile road, 50 mile road, but their ways and their G maps and Apple Maps are taking them through neighborhoods, and it's causing problems. So if you can kind of get ahold of me or one of us, so we can meet and talk about it, we'll, we'll work on a plan to help you out. Yeah, sure. Thank you for coming here tonight. Item number two, consider the consent agenda. Any comments or motions to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove a few items.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
The board minutes.
Okay.
The item A, item D, approve the winter millage report.
Okay.
And E, payroll and vouchers.
Payroll and vouchers. Anybody else? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll handle A, D, and E, Mark, after we come out of our private session, okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll call those six, A, B, and C. Yes.
Do you want to move maybe the D, which is a special item that requires a specific staff member who's here and do that rather than wait till the?
Yeah, we'll do that as 2A then. Thank you, Michael. Okay, thank you. Two, we'll make that 2A. Thank you.
Well, there already is a 2A, maybe we shouldn't.
We'll just call it 2D.
It'll just be three. It'll end up just being, everything gets pushed down.
Okay. All right, three. Thank you, everyone. Okay. So all in favor, did someone make a motion on the consent agenda? Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes seven to nothing. Thank you. Okay, so then, why don't we address that now, the winter millage?
You have a question? Mr. Antokka has a question.
Yes.
Yes, my question is related into the allocated fund millage. I would like to understand what that allocated millage is required to pay for. I mean, from what I can garner from researching, it should go to treasury, general expenses for the general fund, clerk's fees, accounting systems, general items to run the township. So that's number one, I wanted to validate that.
Anything else with that, Mark, or does that cover it?
No, that's the first question.
Okay, Darren, welcome. Darren Kratz, our assessor.
What is for its general operating?
Pardon?
It's for general township operating.
Okay. The, and I know you can't answer this part of the question, but maybe members of the board can address it. When we calculate the, we have a 180-page report for central services fees, there's no consideration for the allocated general fund millage in that. At the same time, we're charging water and sewer, public safety, other funds, more money than would be required if we did have a segment of that in those calculations. And appears, by excluding it, we, our residents and taxpayers can view it as paying twice for the same services. My other concern is the investment income that we get, and I know that Dirk Beckel Bligh has said that we're using.
Mark, just a minute, let's stay on the topic of the winter millage. If that's another topic, we'll address that through another agenda.
No, it's, it's related because.
In what way?
If, if we're approving central services fees to cover certain expenses, and the allocated general fund millage is excluded from those calculations, why should it be on this report? We can actually put it in as zero and collect nothing, and it seems that we aren't applying the same methodologies throughout.
Okay, well, I don't agree with you, but I'm allowed, Darren, to answer the question.
Well, I think that's more of a question for Tony to kind of look at, and maybe Jason as well, but the allocated general millage is just that. It's for general township funds to keep the township running. We have all these other general, or excuse me, not allocated millages, but all these other voted millages, but the allocated millage is just that. It's to pay the expenses.
Correct. Okay, and then, Tony, you want to give us a call on the other part of it?
Yeah, absolutely. So we did do a deep dive into the 4029 this year, Darren and I, and Jason Thies, and, you know, under the Charter Township Act, we're allowed to levy up to five mils for the, of general allocation under 4227. We're far below that. What's our number?
We're not even one mil. We're less than a mil.
Yeah, we're point, so we're under one mil. But these numbers go directly into the general fund, whereas you were referencing water and sewer rates and some of the other things, those are all, you know, those are all reserve funds that.
No, I was referencing the central services fees. So when you look at the 180-page document, the township, the provider for that document claims that nine million plus dollars in expenses should be allocated to the subaccounts. So I don't know why we aren't including in that nine million the amount of the allocated millage.
It's absolutely a best practice when you're sitting, when you're setting all of your fees to have them accurately account for the cost that they, that this township endures to the benefit of the individual that's being charged, that they aren't offset by this number. This covers other general fund things that aren't subject to fees.
Okay.
And then, do you have another follow-up question, Mark?
No, that was, that was it.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Okay, so if we could approve or have a motion to approve, we'll call it 3A.
I'd like to make a motion. Oh, support.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, six to one, thank you. Okay, item number three, consider approval of collection of delinquent solid waste accounts resolution presented by Noah Maholsky, our DPW Director. Welcome, Noah.
Howdy. Good evening. Here tonight, based on the solid waste ordinance, to submit a roll of accounts for delinquent collection for solid waste, we've been working with Priority. I'm going to bring Dan Venay up here to speak a little bit about what Priority's done to improve their billing practices and kind of make sure everything was accurate there. The township's taken some steps as well, so come on up, Dan. This is Dan Venay. He's our contract manager, like our go-to guy if I need something for the contract and the kind of executive management, so.
Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again, Dan Venay, Vice President of Municipal Sales for Priority. I appreciate you allowing me the time to kind of explain what we've done in our two years together, knowing that we're continuing to push this ladder up into the next rung. So when we started in 2023, I remember Noah, and at the time Katie, had to really pull teeth in order to get a lot of the information from the previous provider. Some of the information that flowed over, of course, had its flaws. So as we touch every home 52 times a year for their waste, or their recycle, or their compost, we only touch a home every, every year four times. So there's only four opportunities for us to make a correction on an issue. So if we get bad data in, it takes a little bit longer for us to get bad data out unless we're known or told of the issue, right? So that first year, we worked together, we, we came up with some more solutions together. We're now in our, entering our third year as of July 1st this past year. But throughout this 24 to 25 calendar service, we implemented a couple of changes, and we've seen some benefits directly from it. The invoices that were just the invoice of the due amount now show a balance amount. So if you owed something in the previous quarter or even greater than that, there's a balance that shows on that account for residents to clear up before we get to this point. And, and what we've noticed in, you know, conversations with you, Mr. Supervisor, and your team, the Treasurer's Office, you know, some people saw our mail and didn't recognize it as payable mail. They thought it was spam mail or junk mail. Me, myself, I'm OCD. Any mail, whether it's junk or not, I open it just to check, but I know I'm probably the, the old style. I still have a checkbook, so I know there's not too many of those like me left, especially my age and younger. So we know that there are still people that think GFL is still servicing them. So there's a lot of variables in this, and when you're talking about 16,000 to 17,000 homes and getting the information out to residents, and you would think two years is a long time. My daughter's two years, it's flown by, so I know how fast time can travel. So if you're thinking you're still on auto pay with the previous provider and it comes to us, we've heard those. We've heard the complaints of not getting the mail from residents, even ones that called us from getting the delinquent notice back in August. And so if you're getting that, the same information is in our system. So there's a couple of things that could have happened in between. I'm not pointing the finger at the resident. The mailhouse could have made a mistake, the print shop could have made a mistake, but our data is the same going out in both avenues. But as we move forward, we're looking at ways to improve our system. There's a, a better way for residents to sign up in our portal, manage their account online. They can see previous payment statements, they can see missed payments live in their portal, make adjustments quicker, faster, and with ease. We have a text option where you can opt-in to receive text messages to receive your payments and make them over your phone by clicking the link in the text. So, and we didn't have that in 2023 to 2024, and we only had that for about half or so of this year, and again, it's an opt-in. So as the, more of your residents are aware of this option, the more can take action into it. But as we move forward into this process, and, you know, as you have the option to approve this delinquency, I don't want any of you to feel like this is final, set in stone with, and I expressed this in our meeting a couple of months ago, or maybe a month ago, if we do find a document of issue where a resident did make a payment, and it didn't reflect on their account, and it did go to the tax on this, we will make them right on our side because that's the right thing to do. And, and I don't want anybody to be nervous that the data is inaccurate, but we also, we live in an environment where people do make mistakes, whether it be on the resident's side or on our side. So we'll make them whole in some way, shape, or form, so I don't want this to feel like the final step, where we submit this, and then if there is that issue that comes up, we will step up to the table as we have in our two years together, so.
And we also did some steps on our side as the township to like audit the data and be, make sure that everything was accurate on our end, including getting that assurance that they'll rectify any issues. I don't know, Michael, if you want to speak to that, but a letter went out to residents because we did, we were kind of a, my staff is on the front line of this because they're getting all the phone calls on a continual basis, so we kind of just, we, we learned what the shortcomings might have been, and one of those was that, that, you know, the logo on the letter made it appear as though it was junk mail, so we filled a letter from the township explaining everything and trying to flesh that out was the best way to kind of get to those errors, and that was successful, in my opinion. So we've reached the point where we're comfortable with that, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a fair characterization. When we first got the delinquent roll back in, what do you think, July timeframe, mid to late July, there were over 2,500 people on that list who had, who owed money according to their Priority's records. So I sent out a letter with Noah and I as the signatories to all of those people, basically saying, we've been told by Priority that you owe this balance under our code of ordinances, delinquent balances will go onto the winter tax bill. If you dispute this amount, please contact Priority and please contact us so that we could track it. And I think from that, we got about 100 people who responded, and I would say a good chunk of those people basically said either, I've never heard of Priority, what is it, what are you talking about, or I never got a bill from them, et cetera. And again, like Dan said, there were a lot of people who got this envelope from Priority, and I know because I was one of them, that said my name or current resident, and it had a logo on it, and the envelope was yellow, and I mean, like, it just, it looked kind of junk mailish. And the fact that it said or current resident, people looked at that and said, oh, that must be junk, right? And not thinking that it was an actual bill. So, so let's, so doing the math, 100 out of 2,500, you know, is 4% that we got a response saying that there was a dispute with the amount. We worked through with Priority all of those 100 people, and those people that owed money, they paid it, and those people where there was truly an error on the, the account side, where they had made a payment and that payment wasn't properly posted or credited to their account, we got that corrected. So initially, the list was, of those 2,500 people, came out to about $900,000. The, the delinquent roll that we're asking for approval tonight is a little over $400,000. So we were able to get that either corrected or people pay. And if the people got the letter from me and they said, oh, I owe this money, they paid their bill. And so we, we got that, we got that caught up. And we let people know, hey, Priorities are waste hauler, you're, they're going to be billing you quarterly, you got to pay that bill. And so that was the process that we went through, and it was quite a taxing event for my staff and Noah's staff, but we made it through it, so thank you. And so I think that kind of explains it a little bit, but as Noah pointed out, we have a solid waste ordinance, and the solid waste ordinance is very clear that the waste hauler is to try to collect it. Any monies they can't collect by October 1st, get put onto the winter tax bill. And as the lawyers would say, it's a shell, not a may, and so we have to put it on the tax bill. But I felt that it was important that we come to the board tonight and discuss it, and then hopefully take the appropriate action, so.
Yeah, and just to cover a couple of things too as well, like, it was a math, the GFL record key, when they've been in here for 18 years, there were a lot of changes that occurred during that time. There were, they had mischaracterized multifamily dwellings as single-family homes and things like that, so the data was a bit of a challenge to start. And that, and this number, the $400,000 number, represents two years as well. So we looked at the averages, and we, look, we do this the same way in water, and it appears as though there's just a contingent of residents within the township that would rather pay it on their taxes than, than either pay a water bill or pay a quarterly solid waste bill, for whatever reason, so. And critically for us, that backing of any issues that come to arise that are errors of fact after the fact here was important for us as an assurance as well, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
My only comment is I'm glad that you're taking the steps to address all the variables that have been involved with mistaken invoices, whether it's as a result of the GFL, the result of bad data, and all the other excuses you came up with. But with all that said, residents are still getting invoices that are incorrect, and there's no question about that. I get calls, I've had dozens and dozens and dozens of calls in the past few months. I know I've contacted you, contacted the Supervisor's Office, we've had people who've contacted Priority, and Priority has tried to address these issues, and every one of them, it's been a problem with the invoice, with the accounting and the invoicing from Priority. So Priority does make mistakes, and after two years, I would like to think that you're beyond making mistakes, other, just not very few mistakes. I mean, it should be a much more consistent bill that has credibility. And I can't say that at this point, all of your bills have credibility, whether it's people being charged. So I've heard all these excuses, the software doesn't account for people who make annual payments. I've heard people, I've heard excuses, the account, the software doesn't account for the senior discount. So I mean, whether it's training, what, it doesn't matter what the excuse is, these, it really needs to have a lot more credibility, and it has to be fewer mistakes, and it's beyond the point where you should be blaming GFL anymore. I understand early on, but not anymore. And I would like to think and like to hope that this coming year, there'll be very few mistakes and very few residents who are calling us and complaining about mistakes on your billing, because there's, there's still far too many.
Okay, any other comments? Chris?
So I got a comment, a question. I echo Trustee Barnett. I've received phone calls from people on their billing issues and concerned residents who have never gotten a delinquent notice ever in their life, and then you're telling them they're going to bring their tax bill. And not only are they embarrassed or hurt because this has never been a bill, they've never seen it. So wherever the issue is, I'm not saying it, again, I'm not putting it on priority. There are other steps part of there. When we talk about a service, it is our goal to provide the best service. And we went with you guys, not only do you have a vested interest in the township and want to do good, you wanted to expand your business, and we want to be a partner with you. So we need you to kind of step up and be a better partner, because after a couple of years, we're still receiving these notices, that, that's a problem. And again, I know, I know you guys don't want your name tarnished, and we don't want our reputa, reputation tarnished here either. So I would hope that you would work on that and spend as much time as you can making sure you field those phone calls, because I can tell you I am as well. So that was my comment to echo Trustee Barnett. The second one is, do we, is there an additional fee if it goes onto the tax roll that we put on as an assessment or an interest?
Yeah, 6%.
6%? Okay.
And that's a one-time 6%?
Correct.
Okay, Mark?
I would like to echo something that Trustee Barnett said, and it's regarding the single payment. The single payment did not appear on the original invoices either, nor were the discounts for seniors. So if it's not going out on the bill, and the residents are aware, they're typically calling, and when they call to make an adjustment, nobody's picking up the phones during office hours. So let's say 8:00 to 5:00, 8:00 to 6:00. So that's another concern I've heard from residents and neighbors as well. Sometimes you speak with someone, and I spoke to someone that was very pleasant over a year ago. They found the error, they rectified it amicably, they took my one-time payment, and I was glad of that. But this time, it was not the case for me, and I could not make the changes to do a single pay. But at the same time, you know, lives are busy, so.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I just make one request?
Sure.
The motion in the packet, or the, yeah, the motion in the packet references in number two, the Township Code of Ordinances, Section 30-34, I think it should be 30-35.
Okay.
Because that section references the waste hauler collecting the fees and then turning it over to the township.
Okay, so noted.
So, when it, just.
So are you going to make your motion based on that?
Yeah, so, okay, so I'll just, I'll make the motion that we, as presented in the packet with the substitution of Section 30-
packet, with the substitution of Section 30-35 in paragraph 2.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, 6 to 1. Thank you. Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Dan. Item number 4, Public Hearing Site Plan and Special Land Use Request for the Forest Lake Country Club, 1401 Club Drive, presented by Andrea Bibby, our Director of Planning and Building Ordinance. Welcome, Andrea.
Hi, good evening. Okay, so what we have before you is a rather simple site plan request, if you will, in terms of the request on behalf of the Forest Lake Country Club located at 401 Club Drive. Many of you have had an opportunity, hopefully, to read the staff report that is within your packet. And I also know that two of the members here were able to see the site plan application at the Planning Commission, as well as the Zoning Board. So I will take you through rather quickly, and then if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. So as you can see, the Forest Lake property, similar to all of our other private country clubs within the township, is zoned R1, single-family residential. Here is a aerial view of the subject parcel.
Excuse me, I have a bean light to show us exactly where it is.
Captain Jack?
I don't have one handy right now.
Yeah, and please don't interrupt.
Sorry.
We're going to have a public hearing, we'll be able to come up and comment in just a few minutes, too, please.
Okay, so the applicant is seeking site plan approval for the replacement of some existing retaining walls, as well as adding a decorative pergola on the rear of their building at 1401 Club Drive. The existing country club extends across five parcels, but the clubhouse itself, which is the parcel that we're, which is the site plan that we're looking at, sits on a parcel of 9.6 acres located at the southwest corner of Club Drive. Their proposal includes the, really, the beautification, if you will, an improvement of their current back view of the country club. They are asking to replace some existing retaining walls that have come to the end of their durable life, if you will. And this application is actually looking to seek on adding some, a seated area by the pool, as you can see highlighted in that bottom left-hand photograph, where it shows a artificial turf grass, which would allow for patrons of the pool area to have a separate area to go and to sit and to view the pool. And then they are also adding, replacing the existing retaining walls that they have on their site with some more improved materials. And they have also included a very extensive landscape plan to augment this proposal to add a beautification, again, to the rear of their country club. The applicant, because the height of the retaining walls did exceed an overall height of four feet, this application was heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals. At that time, they were in fact approved for variances for them to have walls exceeding four feet in height. And they also, since our zoning ordinance requires that retaining walls are screened at a 75% with evergreen plantings, the applicant sought to ask for, to get a relief from that request, because as I stated before, they have a rather extensive landscape design that was created by Grisimets Landscape Architecture. And that ordinance, I mean, that variance was successful as well at the Zoning Board of Appeals. So essentially, the application speaks for itself. This is really a repair and a replacement and improvement and enhancements to an existing condition. And I do know as well that we have the architect here from Krieger Klatt Associates, which is more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. And with that, I just want to say that this was reviewed by our various departments. It did have an opportunity to go before our Design Review Board on August 6th. It had an opportunity to go to the Planning Commission on September 25th, which at that time, received a positive recommendation to forward it onto the Zoning Board of Appeals, noting that compliance with the requirements of all applicable township departments and compliance with the requirements of the township's landscape architect are met. And then, as I stated previously, this did go before the Zoning Board of Appeals for, and September 9th, to be seeking those variances for the height of those retaining walls, as well as the vegetation. So now it comes before you for final consideration of a site plan.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. And if you're here to comment on this issue, now is your time to come up to the microphone and state your comments on this improvement to the Forest Lake Country Club. If not, we'll close public hearing and open it up to the board. And before we get started, Mary, would you do me a favor? Will you get up and close that door back there in Chris's office, please? Thank you. Okay. So would the, open up the board, and the architect would like to come up and make any comment? You can, as well, introduce yourself.
For your time, I'm Jeff Klaas with Krieger Klatt Architects, 400 East Lincoln and Royal Oak. Yeah, Ms. Bibby did an amazing job explaining it, so we have an elaborate presentation, but it really summarized the same thing that you already mentioned. So more than happy to run through that, more than happy to answer any questions you have. But this is like one of the final puzzle pieces of their improvement strategy. The club invested over $12 million over the past five years on the golf course, or portion of the golf course, the interior of the club, the entryway to the golf area. And this is one of those final pieces. It's, the previous patio area improvements are about 35 years old, the retaining walls are crumbling, every year the staff has to restack these walls, poor drainage, the landscape is, is, you know, it's past usable life. So now we're looking for...
Beautiful. Looks great.
Thank you.
So any questions from the board?
No questions. Just, I was just going to say, it totally complements all the improvements and redesign of the interior. And I agree, definitely was needed on the exterior, both for design and functionality, and did a great job, so.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Very nice.
Neil, you've got something right there. Neil?
There you go.
Any other comments?
So, same thing, again, it went through the ZBA. It was a great presentation. Obviously, it's an improvement to what you're doing, and it's a replacement, as well as just fixing drainage issues. So it voted 7 to 0, so I'm totally in favor of it.
Any other comments or questions? Mark?
Yes. On the site plan, there was some work done for sewer line. How does, where does that sewer line replacement as, with regards to this project, is it in the same area?
That is, I don't believe we adjusted the sewer line.
Um, all right. Um...
It was our project, it was to the, um... West or north?
If you'd like to come on up.
Come up to the microphone, that'd be great, and introduce yourself. Thank you.
It's not anywhere near this area.
No. It's on the other side.
No, it's closer to the park. It was, and if it would be replacing some of the damage.
Is it by the tennis courts or the parking lot?
Okay, would you introduce yourself, sir?
Yeah, so Ryan Moore, I'm the golf course superintendent for Forest Lake Country Club. I met a few, you along the way, a lot of these improvements. This is probably the best map to kind of see, but adjacent to oldest area are two tennis courts. The township sewer runs in between those tennis courts towards the lakefront. That is really good, I wish I had the laser. Kind of does, almost run up, hit it. But it runs through the tennis courts, it runs up basically the lakefront. Oldest area is either to the east side of it, or to the south side of it. So we're outside the portfolio of that area. All the manholes are very clearly marked. I was involved in the project when the township came in, so.
Okay, good to hear.
Thank you.
And why the additional variance on the previous retaining wall?
Those walls were there, and there's about 20 feet of grade difference from the clubhouse level down to the pool deck. So regardless of what we do, so we're kind of limited from the building face and the pool deck itself. So we're challenged horizontally and vertically. So we did our best to step the walls back and to minimize that. And as Ms. Bibby's mentioned, too, we do have, you know, beautiful mix of landscape to help buffer that. So we, those retaining walls are already there, but they're just in a much more chaotic fashion right now, where this is much more simple, more elegant, and a more consistent pathway. So there's a, I think in the presentation that I, just, excuse me, in that area that might help this. So, I mean...
What is that, sorry?
Oh, it's other than this. Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, that condition exists. There's retaining walls out there now. There's about, I think there's almost 20 walls, various walls that are scattered. So this is a much more simpler approach, there's a good buffer between each wall. And we do, there's a simple section, like a cake slice through the site that shows it right now in our presentation, but it might be challenging to pull it up.
Oh, I got it, sorry.
So the overall change in elevation, or for the retaining wall is the same, but the structure and distribution of the retaining walls are different?
Correct. I mean, you can even see from this photo right here, those walls. Might be another one answering existing conditions that, I think it was earlier in the slide that we can, in the background, it just shows them over there. Yeah, this one right there. You can see, this is the current condition, this is a site plan view, or an area looking down. And looking at those, it's kind of hard to see here, but I want to go up there and point at it, too. But there's, you see the clubhouse buildings to the top, the light shaded gray, and then the pool, of course, is the blue shaded in between that. So all those walls, you see those, those kind of rather chaotic lines, those are the current retaining walls, they're kind of all over the place. And then there's plantings in between, and then if we jump to some of those photos, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
You can kind of see them right there, you know, they're somewhat imposing, the landscape's past its usable life, those walls are quite tall, and they're just, you know, a bit chaotic. So the new plan isn't here, too. There's a colored version, which might make it easier to read.
Yeah, I would encourage you, if you haven't had a chance, stop over this week and park in the parking lot and walk.
And the new plan's a lot safer, too. It really was not safe to walk around there before.
Excellent point.
Yeah, much safer.
No, it's, yeah, and again, it ties back to the requirements to change the retaining wall variances.
This is really that, if you want, if you call it cake slice, cutting through that area, the pool deck to the bottom, and then the clubhouse area to the top. So there's about, you know, 21 and 1/2 feet of difference between those two. So you can see, like, the yellow shading represents the wall, so one is 2 feet high, the next one's 3.75 feet, 4.75. But there's good buffer, horizontal buffer, you know, landscape beds in between those, with some nice plantings that'll help break up those walls, too. The idea is really not to see the walls, and you're going to to some degree, but the plantings will help soften and buffer it. And it's just much more consistent and elegant, in my opinion, than what it was before. And that's a great point, too, that Mr. Barnett pointed out, or trustee Barnett pointed out, that the concrete's cracked, it's crumbling, there's trip hazards, there's issues, there's so many different levels, we try to simplify the levels now of walkable area, so.
Thanks for explaining that and showing the additional detail. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Great question.
Any other questions or comments?
And in this, when you compare this one to the other one, it's stark contrast.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
For sure, it's beautiful. Very nice, well done. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes 7 to nothing. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Great asset to the community, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 5, introduction of a lot split request at 7466 Wing Lake Road, presented by Andrea Bibby, our Director of Planning and Building and Ordinance. Welcome back, Andrea.
Thank you. Okay, so my request before the board this evening is to ask the board to consider setting a public hearing for October 20th, Monday, October 20th. There is a, we have received an application for a lot split request at 7466 Wing Lake Road. The application has been reviewed, the supplied surveys have been provided, and we have determined, based on our review, that they comply with the provisions of our lot split ordinance. So we would ask the board consider setting a public hearing date for Monday, October 20th, so we can hold the final public hearing for consideration of a lot split.
So just for clarity, the second Monday is the 13th, the fourth Monday is the 27th?
Okay, so I apologize, I've asked for the 27th, because we wouldn't have time to notice for the 13th, with the first being tomorrow. Thank you, Martin.
Absolutely.
So I'd ask to set the public hearing for October 27th.
Okay. Any comments or questions about that? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
And support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes 7 to nothing. Thank you, Andrea. Okay. All right, item number 6, our attorney had to run and get some paperwork for us, but Martin?
Item number 6 is concerning a closed session, and I'd like to make a motion that we enter a closed session pursuant to MCL 152681H to discuss material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state and federal statute, specifically interning client privilege written legal opinion.
Is there support? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll take a roll call.
We need a roll call.
So trustee Barnett?
Yes.
Trustee Murray?
Yes.
Trustee Antokley?
Yes.
Trustee Kalinsky?
Yes.
Treasurer Shostak?
Yes.
Clerk Brook, MES, Mr. McCready?
Yes. It passes 7 to nothing through a roll call vote, thank you. So we will go into private session, then come back after and reconvene.
Yes.
And we'll have two items left to address. All right, we'll go back to the comments. Back, so I'll call the board back in session at 7:55 approximately, or 7:58. And Martin?
I'd like to make a motion on the agenda.
Okay, Martin, go ahead.
So I'd add, make a motion that we add an agenda item to take action regarding closed session.
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes 7 to nothing. And then now we'll deal with item 6A, mark approved board minutes of September 8th.
Well, actually, I need to make a motion.
No, wait, wait.
So the motion that I want to make, so we've amended the agenda, now the motion is to authorize the township clerk to respond to the FOIA appeal dated August 29, 2025, in the form recommended by the township attorney.
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 7 to nothing. Okay, we're good?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, and so now we'll move to item, call it 6A, approve the board minutes. Mark, you got a comment on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple items with Tony. First, the Department of Treasury recommends that the interest income should follow the principle. Second, that Dirk Becker like provided a statement on how we do it. And the third, I think those are both accurate, correct?
Excuse me. Those items are not in the minutes, so we won't adjust it.
Yeah, those aren't on the minute.
But they are on the video.
That's fine, and we're not, the minutes, number one, you, everyone was distributed working version of the minutes almost a week ago, I've not heard from you. Number two, the minutes reflect the items on the agenda, or items added to the agenda, and action on those items. It never reflects ongoing conversations in detail.
Right. But if misstatements are made, can't they be corrected?
Well, that depends on who you think is making the mistake, or the misstatement. So let me, let me help you here. I think what you should do, Mark, is contact us, or come in and see me, or Martin, and ask for this to be an agenda item. And then come in with your argument and your solution on this agenda item, and let us discuss it and debate it as an agenda item, because it isn't in the agenda. And you keep wanting to address it, which is fine, but I would ask you to come in, and we'll address it as an agenda item going forward.
No, the, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, Clerk Brook said that there's no recommendation from the state of Michigan. And it comes from the township, the Michigan Township Association. But the Department of Treasury's statement are valid.
Mark?
And that's...
Mark, I understand what you're saying.
Where is that? I don't see that.
But we contacted...
It was said during the video.
But it's not in the minutes.
Okay, just a second. Tony, will you give us a call on this thing? Because we need to move on.
Yeah, so first of all, the issue isn't in the minutes, and it's properly not in the minutes. It wasn't an action item.